We'll call tonight's meeting to order of the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, December 22nd. It is currently 7:02 PM. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, found in law Chapter 30A, subsection 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus emergency outbreak, the December 22nd, 7:00 PM public meeting on Norfolk School Committee shall be held remotely. Alternate public access this meeting shall be done via NCTV livestreaming on the government channel, just Comcast 22, Verizon 42, as well as YouTube, Backslash, Norfolk Cable, and Google Meet Online Video Conferencing. These applications will allow users to view the meeting. Comments are allowed during allocated windows as outlined in the school committee's public comment policy. To join, go to NCTV, follow the web link, or call the dial-in number listed below. The meeting will be recorded for future rebroadcast by Norfolk Community Television. Tonight's exhibits are available on the Norfolk Public Schools website. Questions and comments may be sent to schoolcommitteequestions@norfolk.k12.ma.us. Please note, questions for the school committee must be submitted prior to the 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting in order to be read at the meeting. And as we begin each and every one of our meetings, we read the mission statement, which is, "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education, inspires lifelong learners, and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call, please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Shannon Menestas.
I'm doing it. Madora Champagne.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Allardy.
All right. So, actually have one public comment, which will be actually made by Jen Nguyen and her role as parent, so she will be presenting a public comment. So Jen, if you want to take it away.
Thank you, Thomas, for letting me read this. And I do recognize that it is a little over three minutes, however, I am summarizing some parent concerns that they've relayed to me, so I feel like I should be able to have a little extra time. Dear Dr. Allardy, School Committee members, teachers, and staff of Norfolk Public Schools, I am writing this letter for public comment from multiple perspectives. One, as a parent; two, as a teacher; and three, as a school committee member. Upon reflection over various comments, questions, and information from both administration, parents, and government, I feel the need to offer comments as well as put forth a request tonight. First, as a school committee member, I'd like to review a timeline of events from my recollection. In March of 2020, Norfolk Public Schools closed down and entered a remote learning period, as did all of the schools across the state. This was a time when little was known about the virus, no masks nor hand sanitizer could be found. Most of our students and teachers were not adept at remote learning platforms, as this is not typically introduced to students until sixth or seventh grade, and certainly, no one had the availability, as we do now, to such platforms. Many people, staff included, were terrified. So no remote learning, in my opinion, was not the wrong decision by Governor Baker. In June, a volunteer reopening committee was formed, made up of teachers, administration, and parents. They awaited guidelines from the government, DESI, of what would be mandated. DESI announced their guidelines in early August. The reopening committee spent hours, hours of their time looking at the guidelines spacing in Norfolk and logistics that fit for the space and budget for the Norfolk, not Walpole, not Medway, not any other district, looking at what would be fit for the Norfolk Public Schools. This included implementing and following the highest quality of health guidelines put forth by the CDC. I will not get into the minutia of the logistics, but suffice to say, it is beyond a reason of my doubt in my mind that the reopening committee thoroughly investigated and researched many options and recommended the one that staff felt safe to come back and teach, as well as provided time on learning for the core subjects while in person by certified teachers. Some districts, to my understanding, are not using certified teachers. So I just want to give kudos to the reopening committee for making that happen. And yes, across the state, every district had to survey their staff to see if they would be willing to come back in person. Remember, teachers did not get into teaching to deal with infectious diseases like medical professionals do. This was a legitimate concern by most districts that there may not be enough staff to open up schools in September, as well as what space and budget-wise could be done, especially in such a small district as Norfolk. Remember that as of August, no one knew schools would not be super-spreaders. It was a very challenging time to try to get PPE gear, Plexiglas, HEPI filters, et cetera, for our schools. There was a spectrum of public voices, from no masks to "we will die if we go back," to "everyone should be back no matter what the safety guidelines," and that's just some of the feedback that I received back in August. On an additional note, I would like to add that not only did the reopening committee spend hours of their summer working on the plan and the feasibility of it, but every one of our administrators did not take a family vacation last summer due to the incredible planning of this uncharted educational format. The administration continues, and I might add on a skeleton crew, to spend weekends, holidays, and nights contact tracing, of which I would not want to pass on as a duty to anyone besides a public health nurse or epidemiologist. Now we are three successful months into the school year with no super-spreads. The superintendent stated there would be a period of review, and at the last school committee meeting, she shared many parents' feedback of wanting more teacher time for their children on remote days. My understanding from the reopening committee is the teachers and school administrators shared their concerns back in August with live streaming and taking away time on learning from the in-person students to teach the students at home if he or she would have tech difficulties. But also, they looked at the research that showed strictly live streaming led to poor learning outcomes. My understanding from the reopening committee back in August is they wanted the lessons to be research-based and quality instruction-free of disruptions and led by certified teachers. However, recently, based on parent feedback now from the survey, some teachers implemented the in-person-remote-together instruction model and provided feedback to their colleagues and administrators. Also, other grade levels worked together, discussed the best way to increase live instruction, all of which we are here tonight to learn about. As a teacher, I know how hard it is to teach this way. There will be tech issues. The other day, I counted 15 minutes of off-time learning in-person students in a colleague's class, so Google Docs issue could be worked on with the remote portion of the class. I've seen many things in the home settings of students that distract the class, such as talking parrot. True story. However, I've also seen the myriad of student learning that goes on with remote portion students and in-person at the same time, chiming in, working, showing their work. My colleagues and I were exasperated at first, but now there is a groove, a new normal. Is it perfect? Far from it. And there will be students who will keep their cameras off and distract or have side Google hangouts. Yes, but there will be many who listen and participate. I also believe most children are now fairly fluent with this type of technology, one less hurdle for teachers to face, to have had to overcome in September, and I'll get to my point. I know we are here tonight to discuss changes to the hybrid plan. First, as a parent, I feel the need to express many parents' concerns conveyed to me, concerns they voiced for their children's sake, and I ask that more scheduled teacher time be incorporated into the remote learning days. As a parent, I concur with the feedback from other parents in regard to increasing live instruction. I would argue that having children under the age of 16 learning all day on their own is not an ideal lesson, and I would prefer to have them set schedule of classes every day to meet with a teacher. And there has been an adjustment period in which everyone has learned the safety protocols and the new platforms, and I believe it is time to now focus on teaching both remote and in-person students together. No one is expecting perfection. This is a giant unknown teaching practicum for schools, and we are learning as we go. And second, while there must be flexibility and fluidity right now due to ever-changing information, I respectfully ask the school committee and administration to please set forth a timeline or periodic review of the hybrid plan. I realize no one has a crystal ball, but it is imperative that parents and students know what the end goal is and what we're going to do to achieve that. So, I would kindly ask that we have six-week reviews starting in January. This could be the same survey as November, and then discussion as follows to the school committee meeting. And last, could there be a discussion about a survey for students in grades four through six to receive their feedback? They, I believe, it is critical they are part of this process, and since I believe MCAS surveys these students about their own test, I believe these grades are old enough to complete a survey and provide valuable feedback. So all in all, I want to recognize the hours and sacrifices of all parties. My wish for all, and I've thought about this many, many times, is that we can reflect when this is over, and it will be over someday, that we can say we were models of grace and relative patience, and not be filled with regret for hostility displayed to teachers, fellow parents, or administration. We need to work together, because this is a trickle-down effect. I know this for a fact. I've worked in districts like this. The climate and culture of a school is set by the adults, and for positive learning outcomes, we need to have trust and reciprocity of dialogue between all parties. With kind regards, Jennifer.
All right. Thank you very much. I guess any sort of discussion on that will probably flow to later in the program, so it would make sense to cover it at that point. So thank you for putting that together, though. All right, so moving on to our next bit of business, which is the Select Board Code of Conduct. That was sent out. I know there was some discussion that folks wanted to have on this, so just to keep this orderly, let's see, A, there's going to be a motion for it first, and then a discussion, so we're following the proper meeting protocol, if you don't mind. So it is going to require a vote at some point, so I assume we are at least going to bring it up for a vote and then subsequently have the discussion on it. So do we have a motion on this, what is the thing, code of conduct, proposed code of conduct?
Could I ask, what is it that we're being asked to do with this?
Yeah, I want to get the motion out there.
No, I mean, I don't understand the motion that you, like, what are we moving to do? Are we voting to say this is great? Are we voting to adopt it? Like, what, I don't understand what motion you want.
Voting to consider, so yeah, I guess the short version would be voting to adopt it after the discussion, should we choose to do so? So sorry, I mean, I wasn't clear with that.
That's what I was not, I didn't understand.
Sorry. I'm not used to these remote meetings yet. No, just kidding. So yeah, so someone wants to put it, so the motion to adopt it, if someone wants to put it out there, we need a second, and then we'd actually get into the meat of it discussing what this actually entails.
Well, to open, I mean, I'll move to consider adopting this, if somebody wants to second that.
I'll second. I'll consider it.
Okay. So now, motion's on the floor, so now we'll get into the discussion portion of it, which I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to think Madora has some thought on it, she would like to share.
I do. And I think, I, this is very, I thought about my comments about this and my discussion about this in an effort to be extraordinarily diplomatic, because I wholeheartedly appreciate, I've watched the Select Board develop this and craft it over, I think, probably the course of a little over a year at this point. So I appreciate what they are trying to do with respect to their code of conduct. I have concerns relative to its applicability here, and so I'm just gonna, you know, I'll lay those out. I think they kind of fall into three buckets, but first of all, as it's drafted, the policy purports to be applicable to boards, committees, special, you know, kind of town positions that are appointed by either the Select Board or the town administrator. The school committee does not fall into either one of those categories, and we don't have a direct line of report from an authority standpoint up to the Select Board. We work with them very closely, and I love working with them, and I appreciate all the time and effort they put into understanding the needs of the school and the school committee and the budget and capital improvement projects and everything that they do to work with us in a collaborative fashion. But we are elected as a committee by the people of Norfolk. We're not appointed, and we're not subject to reappointment, and I am hesitant to put the committee in a position where it appears that we do have an upward line of report in that capacity to the Select Board. Not because I don't like them or appreciate all the hard work they do, but because that's not how the logistical structure of the governance of school committee works. Secondary to that, two things. There are statutory guidelines, not the least of which are included in Chapter 71, that outline the roles and responsibilities of school committee members. State has pretty clearly laid out what we are and are not able to do, and where there's a bright line of delineation between a school committee and a district and town governance for some very specific reasons, so that you do not have a gray area where there is an overlap between control of the schools and overall control of town finances or other town agendas, projects, et cetera. Not that, again, not that I think that that is what is happening here, but those rules, those lines, the lines of demarcation exist for a very specific purpose, and I want to be very respectful of those. Finally, the school committee has a code of conduct already. We have Section B, I believe, of the overall Norfolk Public Schools policy guidelines that deal with the code of ethics for school committee members. They're very explicit, they're very clearly laid out. There are some tremendous redundancies between those, you know, the elements of our code of conduct and what's contained in the Select Board's code of conduct, and it's broken down into categories that deal with the committee's responsibility towards residents, the committee's, you know, the community at large, generally speaking, the committee's responsibility to the school district, and the committee's responsibility to one another as committee members. All of this is, in my opinion, thoroughly and exhaustively covered. There are also subsections of Section B that deal with defining the scope and role of individual, you know, positions within the committee, whether that's the chairperson or the vice-chairperson of the subcommittees. We have longstanding controls in place that dictate our scope, our roles, and how we are expected to behave. So I don't necessarily see how this policy can be directly applied legally or logistically to the committee, and I'm not 100% sure that it's necessary. I would recommend, if we'd like to continue a discussion and take a look at what we already have in place of possibly directing this document to our policy subcommittee so that they can move through and do a side-by-side comparison of what our controls and standards are as compared to what the controls and standards set forth in this policy are, to see if there's anything that we could tweak, add, amend, to improve what we have already in place. But adopting this as a controlling code of conduct, as kind of set forth by the Select Board and the town administrator, feels not wholly appropriate to me or practical when you look at the statutory controls and kind of the bifurcated nature of our role from the rest of town government. That's all.
I would agree. It was going to be my recommendation to the committee for all the reasons that Madora just suggested. The Select Board has worked on developing a policy, and many of the other boards in town do not necessarily have a standing policy that governs code of conduct of members and interaction with the public, such as the advisory board or zoning board or other boards that report to the town administrator. So I believe that was the spirit in which this was developed and then shared out, and the Select Board asked other boards to consider this. But as Madora said, the school committee is separate from the other town boards, privately, separately elected, and has specific areas of governance that are defined by the statute. We do have, unlike some of the other boards, standing policies that address almost all the key points in this document. So I would agree with Madora's recommendation that this could be referred to the policy subcommittee for further review to see if there's anything in the spirit of this document that may be appropriate to adjust in our current documents, but I don't see having a separate code of conduct as necessary for one or really appropriate given the governance structure. So I would agree that this could go to the policy subcommittee. We annually review many different policies, and we are scheduled to start looking at some of our school committee public comment policies as well, so we could do that under that direction.
Shannon or Jen, any further comment?
And just, I meant to mention this earlier, and I neglected to, you know, our, the ethics component of our policy was not developed in a vacuum or independently by the school committee. It was, it's the suggested and kind of model policy through MASC, and I don't mean COVID mask, I mean the Association of School Committees, MASC. So this has been well-vetted, kind of universally agreed upon to be the most reasonable and thorough ethical guidelines for our school committee to be adhering to. So just a footnote.
And I would agree with that, too, Thomas. I was about to say, it's that MASC, our governing body of school committees, has a policy and code of ethics, as well as another side policy, and I spoke with MASC today. So it's a pretty thorough code of ethics, but happy to have the subcommittee look at it and see if there's anything we need to tweak or add, and I just want to make sure there's no conflicts either in the language before we adopt anything.
Same here, and I thought, Madora, I agreed with everything you said, and you captured it perfectly, and Jen agreed, we can take a look at it and see if there's any conflicting, anything conflicting, but also if there's any language we need to modify. So nothing additional from you.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add to this beyond that I fully agree with it. I think we found last year where the line between school committee and Select Board was sort of unintentionally getting blurred, and I felt uncomfortable then about it. And I think this is very good intentions, and as everyone else has all stated, I think it's just largely duplicative, and it is something that we could, within policy as noted, if we need to make any adjustments to what we already have for us, that's fine, but I think it is very important that we are a separate, standalone functioning body as opposed to these other town bodies and boards and such. I understand why this applies completely for them, I have no problem with it. I didn't look at it from the viewpoint of, for their viewpoint, because that doesn't really interest me, honestly, but from our viewpoint, it's unnecessary. So the spirit of it is very good, I think the basic intent of it is very good. I think we'll get to our version of it that largely does the same thing, but it will also operate within the context, as Madora was mentioning, the very statutory requirements we have, you know, some of this, even like federal law even covers some of this. I mean, it just seems, I think this can be shortened up a bit, and then I think we all leave with the same sentiment that we are firm believers in ethics and strong, good ethics, we're okay with that, but we'll have our own little document that demonstrates that. So, unless everyone has anything else to add, so we have a motion, so the motions, so right now is to adopt this, so then we would need, and I guess the question, we would just reject that, or we could also decide to just table it pending further discussion.
Or you could vote not to, or do a different motion, not to accept this policy and to refer to the subcommittee to review the current standing policies, to see if there's any adjustments that need to be made.
All right. What do we, what do this, is we have a motion to accept this. Let's put, let's vote on that motion and then do a separate motion to refer it to subcommittee. I think that makes the most sense procedurally. So all in favor of adopting this, the ethics, this is tang, ethics document as presented us, vote now? Okay, no one, all against? Which is everybody? Okay.
Nay.
So the nays carry, four to nothing. And then, so then we need a motion then to refer this to policy subcommittee to further study it.
I move to refer this Select Board Code of Conduct to the policy subcommittee for further study to see if any portions could be utilized to improve upon our existing code of conduct and ethics.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, four-nothing to that one. So, all right. And that is it for me. We move on to Ingrid.
All right. So we have a couple of things that are, should be fairly quick tonight. Per the district policy, I have to provide the school committee with a quarterly report on all bullying incidents. As you can see in your packet, for the first quarter of the school year, we did not have any reports of bullying at either the H. L. Day or the Freeman Kennedy. I did note in that that we're continuing to use our Second Step program for anti-bullying and bullying prevention, as well as our two social-emotional learning programs, the Open Circle at the H. L. Day and Second Step at the upper grades, to continue to support students with problem-solving skills and other social-emotional needs. Any questions on that one? Okay. The next thing in the docket is travel guidelines. So as everybody is aware, the Massachusetts state government has a travel ban in place and has requirements for any individual that travels outside of Massachusetts to a high-risk state, which currently is anywhere other than Hawaii, which people all love to go to, but if you go anywhere else, it's currently a high-risk state. Upon returning from travel, residents are required to quarantine for 14 days, or there's a testing option. If you have a negative COVID test within 72 hours of returning to Massachusetts, then you are no longer required to quarantine. The travel ban, the way that it's worded, there is an exemption for students under 10 from the testing requirement. It's not clear about the quarantining requirement. So in consultation with our public health nurse and with the Department of Education, what they are advising is that districts adopt a policy or a protocol where if a family travels, students under 10 are not required to be tested. However, they are required to quarantine until other members of their family or travel party have met the criteria for being allowed to return to school or work. So if a family traveled, all of the members of the family either have to quarantine or the remainder part of the family has to produce a negative COVID test. Once the members of the travel party are cleared, then the child will be able to return to school. So that is a practice that we have been following under the direction of the public health nurse, and again, as in consultation with the Department of Education. I brought it forward to the committee tonight for you to review and to vote on, to make it a confirmed policy and practice that we will continue to implement. We do expect many families will travel over the December break. We are in our sixth week of being in the red in Norfolk with high rates of community spread. We are doing everything possible to protect the schools and to be able to remain open and provide in-person learning. It's somewhat counterproductive if a family travels and the younger child is able to come back, but the child that's over 10 is not in terms of COVID mitigation. So I would support the recommendation of the Department of Education and the public health nurse that we continue to enforce this protocol.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the travel policy as described by Ingrid?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make.
Yeah, sorry, that went out wrong.
That's okay. I will make a motion to accept the travel policy, temporary travel policy, I will add, described by Ingrid.
Second.
A further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, are you?
And now I'm going to go clear my throat, so give me a second.
Mute yourself.
All right. So the next item we have on the agenda, as Jen alluded to during her public comment, we have been working really hard at looking at our hybrid and remote learning platforms. We have shared at the last school committee meeting feedback from parents and some teachers regarding the effectiveness of our programs and what we could do to enhance and enrich them. The primary themes from parent comments were, as Jen mentioned, parents were looking for more interaction between the children and their teacher on remote learning days and more live instruction. Our teachers also shared that they felt that kids were, that had more questions, that some kids needed more support on the remote learning days, so we were in alignment on those things. The other comments that we heard from parents are sometimes that the special schedule can be difficult to manage, and we will speak to that a little bit tonight as well. Before we talk about the changes that we're proposing tonight for our hybrid and remote learning plans, which I think will meet and address those primary areas of concern in a way that is also developmentally appropriate for students and will lead to better learning outcomes, I did want to talk about some feedback we've had from parents that have been looking for a full return to live in-person learning. So I do want to address some of the challenges that we face as a district in order to even consider that. As you're aware, we have had a critical space shortage at the H. L. Day school for over four years now. We have an increasing and growing enrollment as the town develops and new construction happens. We have been watching those numbers. We've had NASDAQ and other groups. We have been watching those numbers. We've had N E S D E C and other groups do projections and enrollment studies for us. Last year, and we had about 135 students in our kindergarten program. N E S D E C was, uh, projecting that we would have 164 this year. I know that some of the public was concerned that that might be a high estimate. We actually have 167 enrolled in kindergarten. So we've exceeded the N E S D E C projections. We had to add two classrooms there. Also, the H L of Day is a 25 years old. There are many spaces in that building that we had office space where teachers might be working with small groups of students. Those offices are in the center of the building, so do not all have windows or, um, access to appropriate H VAC, um, air exchange. So we had to relocate classrooms. So currently, we do not have a music room. We do not have an art room. We do not have a library and two thirds of the cafeteria and gymnasium is used at the H L of Day currently for instruction. So we do not have the capacity to expand live learning, bring more students in. Because even if you were to reduce social distancing in the classroom from the recommended six feet, which is supported by the C B C and the Harvard Public School of Health, to the minimal standard that Desi has put forward of three feet. That even Desi requires six feet of distancing for lunch and math breaks. We can only fit 39 students at a time in the cafeteria at the H L of Day school. So as you can see, with 167 kindergarten students, we would not be able to accommodate lunches for all three grade levels. The cafeteria would be in use all day long. We'd be serving lunch at nine o'clock in the morning. And with that lack of space, there would be nowhere for all of the other students to have their required mandatory math breaks. So even if we were to adopt a lower standard, we cannot meet the minimal threshold for those non-mask times, math breaks and lunch. Additionally, we have a significant challenge with transportation. Right now, we only have 50% of our students in school on a given day and 20, uh, 50% of those are on the bus. So that's a quarter of our students, which means a quarter of our parents are driving. Drop off and pickup at both schools is taking about 15 to 20 minutes. And parents are backed up to Rockwood Road into Main Street. We do not have the capacity to double those drop off lines without blocking traffic and interfering significantly with student arrival. Kids would be arriving and leaving school over a 45 minute period. So it's physically not feasible for us at this time. At the same time, we do hear and recognize the concerns that parents have shared about live instruction. Again, our staff support those concerns and, you know, we would all love to have all of our kids back all the time. It would be light years easier from a teaching and learning perspective. But we have to keep the community members safe, our teachers safe, our students safe. So what we are recommending at this time, we are going to consider in January, consider bringing all of our preschool back, the students back for a full live instruction. We need to see the community move out of the red and hopefully see cases start to decline before we consider that. But our preschool program and our preschool students do not access lunch and they do not need a math break other than their scheduled outdoor, um, play periods. So we can consider preschool and we will do that. Kindergarten, we are going to look at increasing their live instruction by adding days to their week. So our kindergarten students now are half-day kindergarten, our, our cohorts are divided into morning and an afternoon cohort. Students are coming to school four days a week with Wednesday as a remote learning day. We are going to propose in January, as we enter phase two, that kindergarten students come five days a week. They'll come either five mornings or five afternoons with one Wednesday a month being a remote learning day instead of every Wednesday. So that will add significant learning time. It'll really model what many districts implement as a regular kindergarten program, half-day kindergarten program. But beyond half-day, they will also have their specials, which will alternate between live and remote instruction in the afternoon. So we will be providing more than a typical half-day kindergarten program for kindergarten students. In grades one to six, we are looking at developmentally appropriate ways to add live instruction. From our experiences back in the spring, it's very clear and we, we've learned through the research, but also through practical experience, delivering live instruction to 20 first grade students on a Google Meet does not work. It's confusing. It's hard for kids to follow. Um, kids are easily distracted. The teacher cannot provide enough feedback and support to keep the lesson going in a way that's meaningful and engaging. So what we are going to be recommending for first and second is that we're going to hire and we have secured individuals for the positions, an additional remote support teacher for grade one and a remote support teacher for grade two. Those teachers that we have hired, both have been affiliated with the Norfolk schools, are familiar with the Norfolk curriculum and are ready to, um, roll out and get started. They will work collaboratively with the grade level teams and on the remote students' learning days, they'll provide 45 minutes of direct live instruction to the small cohort that is learning from home. So that will allow us to enrich literacy instruction, provide academic support. We will really, um, determine the content of those remote lessons in collaboration with grade level teams based on the needs of the students. So right now, the first grade team and the second grade team are really looking at literacy and, and written language as a critical area of need. But that may shift over the year based on student assessment data, based on changes to the curriculum. So the remote teacher will be involved in planning with the grade level, will pick focused areas and will develop live lessons that will be delivered to the small group in partnership with, uh, with the classroom teacher. Grades three to six, we are going to be transitioning to providing live content instruction, um, in a, in a blended format. So teachers will be providing content instruction on remote learning days to both the students in person and to the students at home. I'm going to turn it over to our curriculum director, Vicky Saldana, and she is going to, to make it a little simpler for everybody. We put together a model schedule so that you could see the changes and how it looked different. So I'm going to want Vicky to share her screen. This will be added to your packet tonight after the meeting so that you'll have it as a reference. And Vicky will walk through the changes.
Sure. Um, hi, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Lardy, and thank you, uh, the school committee for giving me a chance to share our plan. I just want to say, um, just upfront that this has been, um, thanks to the great efforts that, um, the collaboration between, um, us and the N T A and the leadership of Mr. Kavanaugh and Mrs. Tromburt. We've also put together, um, a hybrid remote committee where we have representations, a teacher representative from each grade level, as well as special ed and some of our, um, uh, literacy or math specialists. So it really has been a collaborative process to make sure that, um, what we're offering is, really optimizes our teaching and learning opportunities for our students. So, um, I'm going to share with you my screen and I'm going to show you a sample schedule. This is really just to give you a little bit of a visual of what, um, the learning day might look like for your student. The exact specifics of what the schedule, um, will look like will be shared with families a little bit closer to our rollout date, which, um, right now we are looking at starting January, yeah, January 11th for grades one through six, uh, with full implementation of January 18th. And kindergarten will, uh, shift to five days on January 18th. So, um, so this is going to give you kind of a general overview, but it's the breakdown for each grade level might look a little bit different because we're really, um, I guess that we're collaborating with individual grade levels to, um, really, um, taking consideration the developmental, um, ages of the students to make sure that what we put forth, it really, like I said, optimizes their learning for their age group. Okay. So just need a quick second. All right. All right. And I'm going to make this a little bit larger. And this, um, communication will be shared with, in Dr. Lardy's communication of, of the Wednesday words. So, um, families will have access to this. Um, I just want to show in the very beginning, it just gives a brief overview of what Dr. Lardy just shared of what our shifts are, um, for phase two of implementation of our model. It kind of breaks down for each grade level and what it just, like I said, it gives just a few bullet points. And then what I've done is just included, um, like I said, just a sample schedule with the understanding that, um, it might look a little bit different once everything is finalized. So as Dr. Lardy said, kindergarten is going to return to, um, we're going to go from four half-day, um, learning to five. So it kind of took, um, if we follow one student's schedule. So if you look at a K student in the AM, which will, um, the PM student will have the same schedule as well. But I thought it'd be easier for us just to kind of look at one, one cohort. So they would attend school on Monday, Monday through Friday, except for the very first, um, Wednesday of each month would be a remote learning day, um, to allow for teacher planning time. Cause right now teachers do not have, um, uh, just with our contract, enough planning time on the other four days. So, um, the first Wednesday of each, of each, um, month is going to be dedicated as a remote day to kind of allow for, for that planning time for teachers. Um, the teachers, the students will still have on that remote day, um, a morning live S E L lesson. And they will have some, um, remote work in terms of that would, that would kind of support, um, their remote learning for that day. For, um, grades one and two, if we were looking at a student cohort A, um, the student will attend their in-person learning days on Monday and Tuesday as regularly scheduled. Wednesday will be, um, their first remote day. They will have a live S E L lesson. A live or remote special as they have now, which alternates on a bi-weekly schedule. And right now, what we're kind of working out is they would probably have an additional, um, live checking or an academic support block. On Thursday, um, the student will log in on a live S E L lesson in the morning. And then they would meet with our remote learning teacher for a 45 minute small group lesson that will be, um, followed for, with an academic support. Um, and then they would either have a live or remote special and that would be the same thing for Thursday and Friday. Um, in grades three through six, if we're following, um, uh, a cohort A student. So one of the shifts that we're doing, that we're able to do at Freeman Kennedy is to offer in-person, um, P E, which, um, uh, is going to replace one of the, uh, math breaks as a movement day. So each cohort is going to have, um, during their in-person days, a live P E class. And this is a great opportunity for us to kind of incorporate some of, some of those critical, um, skills as well. Since we're able to, um, accommodate space-wise with, um, a live physical education. So on Monday, the student will attend a regular school day and possibly have their, their live session of P E then. On Tuesday, they would, um, attend a regular school day and instead of live P E, they'll have their second math break. Um, on Wednesday and the first remote, um, day, they'll, they'll still log in for their live S E L lesson. Um, and then they would have a live, possibly a live check-in with the classroom teacher or, um, academic support from the teacher in the content area. And then music and art will also be live or remote. Like I said, we're still kind of looking at the hours of the schedule. So that live check-in might be, may look a little bit different in each grade level. It might be, um, an end of day closing circle to an academic support as well. For Thursday, um, the, the student will be in their Thursday and Friday and their second and third day is a remote learning. They'll log in for their live S E L lesson and then they will have at least one hour total of live lessons. In, um, two or three content areas, um, that are spread over the course of the day. The specific schedule, like I said, is going to be shared with, um, with families. And once it's established, it's going to be consistent. So if your student's going to have a live math lesson, for example, on Thursday and Friday at 10 a.m., they'll have a live, um, a live math lesson at that time going forward. It's not going to shift, um, week to week, just to help with consistency. Um, exactly how, um, this is, like I said, broken down for each grade level is going to look a little bit different because grade three students obviously can't sustain, um, for a live meet as long as a grade six student, you know. So, and teachers are also looking flexibly into, um, how they're going to maximize that time. So really looking at those opportunities to provide opportunities for students to do some of those collaborative project-based, um, to work on projects together, you know, uh, between the remote and in-person days on the Google Meet to, um, be able to have, um, additional support with remote, remote work from a teacher. So how that time is broken up, like I said, it's going to a little bit vary by, um, for each grade, grade level based on the, um, and the needs of our learners. And then music and art will, will continue to be on that bi-weekly schedule, um, rotating between a, a live lesson and a remote lesson.
So two things that I just want to add to that, Vicky, before you go on. So in terms of the third, uh, grades three through six, when we say at least an hour of live lessons in the content area, that will be between an hour to an hour and a half of live direct instruction, depending on the grade level. In the younger grades, often when we are delivering instruction, we begin a lesson with a 15-minute mini lesson where we introduce new content. So math might begin with a 15-minute directed lesson and then students complete independent work. So for the younger grades, it could look like, uh, students log in for all of their content mini lessons. So four different direct instruction lessons over the course of the day and then complete their academic work or assignments independently. Um, at the upper grades where you're working on more complex concepts and students have a, a greater capacity to, um, interact online for a longer period of time, it could be broken up into three half-hour, longer, uh, deeper instruction. So that's what Vicky is referring to when we talk about it being varied by the age and the grade level. But the intent is that the curriculum content will be delivered live for both the remote and the in-person learners. One of the advantages of that too, is that it will bring our two cohorts in alignment. And so they're following the same scope and sequence of instruction rather than being staggered. The other advantage is if we have students that have to quarantine or students that are out sick, they will still be able to log in every day for all of their core content instruction. So that also helps parents that might be having to, um, because the child's been exposed, have to have their student home for two weeks. Instead of just getting copies of assignments, they can follow the class and they can participate in all the live lessons. So that's another advantage to this. Um, I, I do want to reinforce what Vicky said and we'll talk about changes to our remote platform next. But this was a tremendous effort and, and a great collaboration with the Norfolk Teachers Association. They have been fantastic partners in this. I think what I wanted to emphasize in, in, in developing this model, we took time to really make sure that we were going to be able to deliver instruction in a way that was effective for students. So we have heard, and, and I'm sure you have heard, other districts are live streaming instruction. The difference between live streaming and what we're talking about live streaming is just when you put a camera in the classroom and kids can watch from home what's happening. We know from the research, from brain-based research, as well as from research on, uh, remote learning platforms, that that does not lead to high levels of student engagement or productive, um, meaningful learning for children. Live instruction is designed to be delivered directly to both groups at the same time simultaneously, where students can put questions in the chat, they can raise their hand, they can participate actively in the, um, in the interactions between the teacher and the other students that are live, uh, learning in person. So it is a much more effective platform. We've done all of the work around the technology. We've expanded our bandwidth to make sure that we can do that smoothly. We have been trialing different setups so that we have a good, clear image, uh, for the teacher that's projected to students at home. We've resolved some issues with Chromebooks. We've tried out iPad cameras. So we are in a position that we can do this and do this well and do it effectively. So, um, that's a tribute to the teachers that have tested things out and given us feedback and to the partnership, um, in, in developing this plan. So I think it will be very well received by parents and, and lead to really, um, strong learning outcomes for our students. Vicky, do you want to talk a little bit about how we're going to?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Could we pause and just ask some questions before getting all the way to the end? Or would you prefer to get all?
The part that we're going to present is how we're going to change the remote-only model. But if you want to talk about hybrid questions first, that's fine.
I do. I'm trying to wrap my mind around it as a parent. And I understand the kindergarten and first grade part and doing, because that's very typical to do 15 minutes and then, you know, show them what to do and then they go and do it, right? For the three through six, my question is, um, do they, do, are you planning on taking attendance for each class? Is that how you're going to break it down? And am I understanding correctly, like, so like, let's say they have S E L nine 20 to nine 50, right? Meet back, take a screen break back at 10, 10 o'clock you have math. Sign in at 10 a.m. Let's say you do 20 minutes, I'm going to show you the skill. Now go forth and do it. Are they checking back in at the end of the period? Will they stay on the meet or will they exit out of the meet?
So there's a, there, at each grade level, it might look a little bit different, but exactly what you're talking about. We have to, for the requirements of the Department of Education, we have to take attendance at every meet. Students are expected to be in, in schooling all day. So when you're talking about doing a 15-minute lesson, uh, mini lesson for third, third or fourth grade, they may do the mini math lesson and leave the Google Meet open so that kids that are working at home can type questions in as they're, they're working on it.
Yep, good.
The longer blocks, there may be some direct instruction, then there could be breakout rooms where kids are doing some work cooperatively and coming back. But there's going to be multiple times over the course of the day, the students are logging in. So if a child is doing a mini lesson in math and then working independently, they're going to log back in 45 minutes later for their next lesson. And the teacher will check in, how did that go? Any questions and move on to the next content.
So I guess my question, so is the expectation for the older children that they will stay in that meet? Or are they allowed to leave?
It's going to depend on the content, but, but, and that's the details that the teachers will send with individual schedules. Sometimes they might be working in a breakout room. Other times they may be told, log off, complete your assignment, check back in in a half an hour. And that's really dependent on the content being delivered.
Yeah. Breakout rooms, you still have to be part of the meet.
Right.
That, um, so you can't leave or you won't be in the breakout room. Teacher initiates that. So you can't leave or you won't be in the breakout room. But okay, I just, I just think it's important, just from my own experience, that they stay, if possible, if the teachers think it's appropriate to stay in the meet and not have that expectation of, okay, you can sign out. That's my opinion.
The nice thing about this, too, is that, kind of, Dr. Allardyce's foresight, we've had an opportunity to, we had some teachers over the past month try out some of these live lessons in various grade levels. And we've kind of gathered data from them as well and really gave them an opportunity to try out the different models to see what worked. So a lot of our kind of, when this, now that the details of schedules are being put together, like I said, this is a really simple overview. It's going to be broken down a lot more. They'll have a lot more information. You'll know exactly when to log in, exactly what the block is going to look like. You know, it's going to provide a lot more information. I just wanted to kind of give you a visual of what is expected over the week, you know. But they're taking their feedback from their colleagues. The teachers have tried it out and kind of shifted some things to, and taken that into consideration when putting together the detail of the schedule.
And I so appreciate that. And I'm sorry if I didn't mention at the beginning. I understand even on a good COVID time, how difficult scheduling is. So I appreciate everyone's time and logistics and flexibility. This may change again in April. Who knows?
I know.
For the better. But I'd say everyone's got to be really flexible, flexible thinking, right? But I just, I just want to wrap my mind before I go vote on something that, you know, that there will be, it's not just like twenty minutes. There you go. That's all. I just want to make sure that there's, and not that I expect the teacher to sit right next to them, but again, that there's some, I want the students to feel accountability for being in class. That's my personal opinion.
And as you said, when the voting piece comes, I think we're going to provide a much more detail. Does that?
Okay.
Yeah. We'll be presenting the full model with all the detailed schedule at the January meeting. It's the second week in January. We'll be rolling out the live lessons, but you'll have a full schedule. Some of the things that we have to work out, again, if we're bringing physical education classes into the day, then we have to modify our schedules. And then that will impact some special education schedules and live lessons. That is where we can't give you the exact schedule yet. But there will be accountability, Jen, for students for their live lesson and the work that they're producing as a result of that.
And that's just what I was looking for, structure. I understand the flexibility in scheduling. No one, I understand that you might set out a schedule and then next week maybe P E needs to be changed to time. Like, I get that. I just want to make sure it's structured.
It will definitely be structured. And again, we have to make it developmentally appropriate. So for young kids, may need to log out and take a movement break. Schedule thing. It will look a little bit different by the ages of students.
Okay.
Can I preview some of the changes to the remote platform?
Sure. So the remote platform is going to follow the same timeline as the hybrid. They will still continue to log in for daily S E L lessons, our morning meetings, Monday through Friday. In kindergarten, they're going to, pretty much the shift, they will parallel the hybrid model in every way. Kindergarten, our remote teaching kindergarten is going to add a Wednesday remote. The kids are going to have live lessons on three out of the four Wednesdays. And then during their remote learning Wednesday, that the rest of the grade level is also going to have a live S E L lesson is going to be delivered, and then some light remote work will be assigned. Specials will continue to be delivered during their remote learning hours, alternating between live and pre-recorded lessons, as they have been all along. In grades one through six, I am meeting with the remote teachers in the next, either this week or the week we come back, just to kind of look at their schedules. We know that the setup is a little bit different because they, even though the live hours are comparable to the hybrid model, just because of the way that model is, are fully remote, they do spread out a little bit over the course of the five days. So what we're looking at is basically just increasing the live learning time and kind of looking at their schedule right now and seeing where would make the most sense to capitalize on additional learning time in the way of everything is structured at this time. So in terms of hours, our fully remote students are going to receive the same amount as our hybrid students, just spread out a little bit differently to accommodate for the model. And again, specials are going to continue to be delivered in the same way that they have been all along. Is there anything that we want to add?
I do think that moving physical education into the school day and replacing a mass break, we're not losing instructional time because it's replacing a scheduled mass break, but it will also help address the challenges parents have had with managing the special schedule because now they're only looking at music and art remotely. I do want to say that we did present this to our parent leaders group last night, and many of our parents, teachers have already started trialing some of this. As we said, we've been piloting it so that we can refine and really make sure we're gathering feedback. And the feedback from the parents that shared last night, who students have participated in some of these live lessons, was very, I would say, very positive. Would you agree, Vicki?
Yes, yes. I think that, I think we all recognize that, you know, our students need the live instruction, you know, to really optimize their learning, you know, as Jen kind of mentioned at the beginning so well. So I think it's a really good shift for our district.
Parents said that they saw the kids were more aged, they were able to get their assignments. They were able to get more live feedback. They felt more connected. So I think for all of the goals that we've set out, the model that we're proposing is going to meet those based on feedback. And I would say, I don't want to speak for everyone. Tom, I don't know if you want to jump in, but overall, I think our teachers are excited and ready to jump into this. And we will provide support. We are, as I said, working through the technology. But I think we're ready to get it started. And as Vicki said, we'll be beginning the live instruction the week of January eleventh. But that's really going to be about setting up routines, helping, making sure kids know the expectations, testing out some of the mini lessons with a full schedule rolled out the week of the eighteenth. School committee would be presented with all the details on the plan at our first meeting in January, which is the week of the eleventh. So you'll be voting on the revisions to the model at that point, once we have all of the scheduling information available for you.
Yeah, I can jump in and tell you that the classroom teachers are in support of this because, you know, bringing the kids into the classroom more frequently is a great idea. Having directed instruction rather than independent learning is much better for the students. And for every hour that I have the students in class, that's one less hour that I have to plan for them at home.
And I just want to add, too, that I, it sounds to me that the teachers are ready to wrap their, like, some of those things, again, when you go back to August, and I think about the mindset, many people had to get their minds wrapped around the safety protocols and all the different, everything, I mean, telling the kids, what is six feet? I mean, it's just incredible what we had to teach these kids and just learning the new platforms. And you're really focused on that. And then now it's like, okay, I got that. Now let's really try to figure out, okay, Janie's here and Johnny's here. I can really make this. I think everyone's in a really good position. So thank you for all your hard work collaborating.
And I would just, to echo that, the plan that we rolled out in the beginning of the school year was guided by the DESI protocols and regulations, all of the safety plans. But we also consciously made the decision that kids were going to, they hadn't been in school since March. Teachers needed one-on-one time with students to assess their progress, figure out where they're coming back, develop and teach the safety procedures to ensure that everybody was safe. One of the positives that teachers shared in the survey from the first six weeks was that they were getting to spend fifteen minutes individually, one-on-one with every child every day in many classes. And that had a lot of value in terms of really building relationships, helping students feel safe coming back to school. Because not only were our administrators and our teachers nervous, kids were very nervous in the first three weeks. So we really needed to spend that focused time, making sure they were comfortable, that they understood the safety protocols, working one-on-one to build relationships, helping them feel comfortable, assessing the learning that they may have missed, building, you know, revising curriculum to address those skills. And as you said, I think now we're in a position where all of those things have become routine, and now we're ready to move forward with the next phase of our learning. So any other questions? We're happy to respond to. But I think this is a really positive next step. The Massachusetts Department of Ed is going to be coming out with new written guidelines. We have had a chance to preview those. We do not have the comprehensive guidelines released yet. But based on our evaluation of what we've been told so far, all of our proposals will meet the required new guidelines. So we don't, we won't have to propose something and then revise it. So we're consistent with the direction I anticipate DESI will be moving. Any other questions? We didn't put it forward to a vote for tonight because we want to be able to bring you the full schedules and all the details. We have worked it out. The kindergarten can start with homes, transportation, the week of the eighteenth. We wanted to give parents time to readjust childcare arrangements. We are going to be working with the rec department, who may offer an enrichment program per K on that one remote day a month, as they do for all of our other students. They have the supervised remote learning centers. We have not opened that to kindergarten at this time, but they may be able to accommodate that for the single day. Any other questions? We're happy to respond to. Again, we'll share this out with all of our families. The document you saw tonight will be in the Wednesday's words. It's going out tomorrow at noon. All right. Thank you, Vicki. Couple of other quick things for tonight. That was our longer portion of the meeting. You have a copy in your packet of a letter from the three public health nurses from Norfolk, Brenton, Plainville. As I mentioned earlier, we are in the sixth week of high, being considered high rates of community transmission of COVID-19 in Norfolk. The number of cases at the prisons leveled out quite a while ago. So the recent cases are really community-based cases. In recognition of that, the public health nurses have worked with the local boards of health and are directing the three districts to implement the full fourteen-day COVID quarantine for anyone that is a close contact of a COVID-positive individual. I know that CDC has moved forward with shortening that requirement and providing a test, opt-out if you have a negative test after day eight. But that is based on the clear data that there are about five percent of children or individuals that will become positive after that day eight. So there is a risk in doing that. It's a known risk. And based on the levels of transmission at this time, the nurses feel that we have to go with the more conservative approach. I believe that will be reevaluated in January as we continue to monitor COVID cases. But again, that falls to the board of health and to the public health nurses. We are, we work in collaboration with them. So that was just more of an informational item, and we'll continue to, I will update you if those guidelines or recommendations change. Any questions on that one? Okay, the next you have in your packet, a recommendation for an increase to substitute rates. As I mentioned at prior meetings, districts across the state are having a difficult time procuring substitutes. And that substitute shortage is further exacerbated by the fact that if we have a case of a COVID-positive individual in the building, we may have to quarantine, you know, four or five different staff members. And so we have, and we're also asking people if they have any symptoms, headache, anything, to stay home. So we have greater absenteeism and fewer substitutes. We actually only have about two people on our sub-list. We usually have a sub-list of eight to ten. Many people are choosing not to substitute during the pandemic, so many people are not coming in this year. Many districts in the region have increased their subrates for a one-year in order to be able to recruit more people. So we are recommending a one-year increase to our substitute rates in order to help us with recruitment of substitute teachers. And the proposals are to increase the rate to ninety-five dollars a day for an instructional assistant, a hundred and ten dollars a day for a teacher, a hundred and fourteen for a certified nurse, a hundred and seventy-five for a long-term sub, and a hundred dollars a day for a long-term para. Those rates are about five, Roxanne, I see in the column in the background, I believe they're about five dollars more than our current rates. And again, just keep us competitive with the market so we're not losing to Franklin and to K P and to Plainville, the few subs that are available on the market right now. So we need a motion for a vote on that one.
Okay. So do we have a motion to accept the substitute rates as described by Dr. Allardy?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions?
I wholeheartedly support this. Yeah. I think it's, I think we need as many substitutes as possible so we can keep as many classrooms open as possible.
Absolutely our goal.
Totally agree.
And we can show that support by all voting, yeah. So all favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four, nothing. All right.
And then the last item that I have is, a few weeks ago, I shared with you a letter that the Mass Association for School Committees and the Mass Association for School Superintendents had sent to Governor Baker's office. As you know, the governor has been speaking recently about encouraging districts to consider a full return to in-person learning for students. For the reasons that I described earlier, it is physically impossible for us to do that and meet the minimum safety standards at this time. So the letter that was sent by Mass and M A S S really focused on some of the key points that I'm in agreement with that we shared tonight, the physical barriers, the local conditions that need to be considered in making that decision. But they also really focused on struggles some districts have had in terms of negotiating with the local associations, reopening plans. That has not been a barrier in Norfolk. That really doesn't represent what our struggles have been. As we've said numerous times, the N T A have been fantastic partners in this. We were able to open on time. We were ready to welcome kids back as soon as we were allowed to open. We've continued to have open dialogue, refine things throughout. So I felt compelled to write an alternate letter to the governor expressing our local concerns and the strong partnership we've had and the importance of keeping our teachers safe, our students safe, and having a healthy community. So I put the letter that I had drafted in the packets. Our school administrative team and the teachers association have decided they'd like to co-sign that letter. So I was presenting to the committee tonight in the interest, if you would like to be added to the letter or to co-sign, I would add your names before we send it. I will send it to the governor's office tomorrow. So the letter that I've drafted is in your packet. And it's up to you whether you'd like to consider having it represent the school committee in addition to the teachers association and the administrative team.
Okay. So do we have a motion to accept and also sign the letter that's drafted? It's in our packet to Governor Baker as authored by Dr. Allardy?
I move to accept and co-sign as a committee the letter drafted by Dr. Allardy to Governor Baker.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I want to very publicly state that I one-hundred percent agree that this follow-up was absolutely necessary. I appreciate our relationship with Mass, and I appreciate the efforts they've undertaken to promote safe returns to education in the pandemic and, you know, protect educational goals, districts. And they represent a very varied body of school districts across the Commonwealth. My impression in Norfolk is that we, you know, any negotiation is a negotiation. Everybody is going to be protecting their own interests. You know, we want to go back to school. The teachers wanted to go back to school, too. The union was a fantastic collaborative partner, was my impression through this whole process, and made very reasonable requests. And, you know, in no way and at no point did I view that organization as in any way hindering our return to education. So I one-hundred percent agree with that. And I'd also like to point out, I know Dr. Allardy doesn't frequently discuss it when we're talking about a return to school. You know, a more full return to school is that, you know, in addition just to the spacing challenges that we have, our budget situation would not allow us to have a full return to school at this point. And that is not said to cast blame anywhere. It has been a horrible budget year for everyone, everywhere, and for other town departments as well. But we cannot return, we can't have a full return to school without assistant principals in both buildings and the positions that had to be eliminated from our original budget request. And we can't forget the spacing and the timing and logistics of transporting students to and from school. If we had everybody coming, we can't afford to do it. So, you know, I mean, I think that that is something that has been disregarded in some of these public statements that have been made. And so I think that communicating the concerns of individual school districts to the governor is certainly something I want to get on board with.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that, sorry, Shannon, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, no. That's what I was just going to say. I second that. I know Dr. Allardy and I talked about it at length. And I want to say thank you to Dr. Allardy for writing that letter and, you know, for the N T A for being such a great partner. When I first read the letter publicly and then, Dr. Allardy, when you sent it, I was a bit surprised by some, not surprised by some of it, because I had heard anecdotally various districts, but I knew that that's not what we experienced here. And I think it was important to bring that to light and to make sure that that collaboration and partnership, you know, logistics and budget, super important, but that aside. and partnership, you know, logistics and budget, super important, but that aside, wanting, um, to make that public statement, I think is important, so thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that, uh, to, to both sentiments is, yes, I fully agreed that a second letter need to be written. I thought the, the original letter, the, the tone and tenor of it, um, was just, it was too much, um, for what, uh, we're all going through and unnecessary. And I think it was very important that we draw the distinction of what we're experiencing here at this district level. And maybe we're very, very fortunate, I don't know if we live in some sort of Pollyanna world, but okay, good for us. Uh, and I don't say this because Tom is sitting there, but I mean, on behalf of the NTA, they've been awesome this whole, this entire time. Um, and they have put the need to the, of the teachers and the students and the, the parents concerned, and all that has been jointly handled, and that, it's really, it, it's very nice to see, it really is. And not everybody's had that experience, so let's enjoy our little Pollyanna world. So, uh, I'm very much in favor of us signing this letter. Um, for all the far more eloquent points that Medora made and, and Shannon added as well, um, it's just, it's, it's important that we do that, it's important that we take the time to thank people and recognize what went behind this, um, and all the, the trials and tribulations that go into this, and it's just not as, yes, as we've said a number of times in a number of meetings now, we all want school open full-time and every kid there in the normal school, but it's not going to happen. Um, we're infinitely better than what I thought we would ever be at this point. To be discussing what we're discussing now and to have gone successfully for the most part from September to now, we should be very, very thankful, and we are very thankful. Uh, and it'll continue to get better, I have every confidence in that. There'll be roadblocks, the budget's going to be chief among them, there'll be, I mean, we're in the red right now, there's, there's all kinds of stuff, and that's just part of the fun, but we'll, we'll get it all sorted out and we'll all work together and it'll work out. So I'm very much like to see this letter, I think it's, it's very well-written, um, and I think it's a, it's an excellent reflection of this community as a whole. So, that's it. Um, so anyway, do our, I guess we've all spoken glowingly about it, so, uh, all those in favor of the just discussed letter?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Four nothing?
Right, so I will add the, um, the school committee-
Agreed.
-to this, and then I will send it out, I'm going to share it with our association as well, because I do think there's some very real issues that we are all struggling with, as we talked about space, transportation, safety protocol. Um, and, and I want the membership to know that, you know, that the safety of our, our teachers, our staff, and all of the children in our community is paramount. And, um, so I want to share this letter once we, I'll sign it with the association as well as with the governor's office, so thank you for your support tonight. That's all I have. Um, I know that Shannon, I mean, um, Sarah is not even here, so she sent the update from KP, it's in your packet. I don't know if we want to review that, or if everybody's had a chance to read it, it's just the update on, um, her membership on the KP committee.
Yeah, assuming we've all had the chance to read through that, is there anything we want to discuss specifically on her information she provided for us? I appreciate her doing that despite her not being here, so it's very nice. And then seeing heads being, saying no, so then we move on, uh, policy?
Jen, do you want to do a policy update? I'm not sure her mic's on, but-
So I lost audio. I put my captions on, so I can read what you're saying, so I can do a policy update. And, uh, basically what we reviewed tonight was the travel update in terms of having children under the age of 10 while, uh, by state policy, and Ingrid, correct me if I'm wrong, um, they do not need to get tested coming back, however, what we are going with per our, um, public health nurse is that either they get tested or they provide, um, proof that people that are living in their household, uh, who traveled with them also, um, tested negative, because it just seemed disingenuous to have kids under 10, but yet your 13-year-old brother might have to get tested when you're all living together in the same house. Um, so we're recommending that, things that we're doing right now is just that it's put in policy.
Okay.
That's all we had.
Uh, and then there's just two, what, a first and a second reading for total three policies, right? So I think we're all set there. I don't know if there's any further to add, sorry, I know Jen, you're having audio difficulties or caption difficulties, whatever. Um, all right, so moving on, we have a-
I've been delegated to the basement, so I think this is probably part of the issue.
You take your punishment, sit in the basement. Um, all right, so moving on to partnership review renewal for the Norfolk Teachers Association, who we just spoke glowingly about, so I imagine we should probably renew them as a partner. So all those in favor of renewing NTA as a partner of the school? Oh, sorry, we should get a motion, excuse me, I jumped ahead of myself. We have a motion to review NTA as a school partner.
So moved.
Anyway, second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, and assuming no further discussion, now we're on to the voting part. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
Aye.
Uh, let's see, and then we need a motion on the meeting minutes from our November 10th meeting. So do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion to accept the meeting minutes from November 10th.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Assuming, any further discussion on that, assuming there's none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay?
Aye.
And we are looking at January 12th. Um, does that work for everybody?
Sure.
I've got nothing going on, so that's fine. Um, all right, so we're good for January 12th, and then our final motion of the evening will be a motion to adjourn tonight's, uh, meeting. So we have a motion to adjourn tonight.
So moved.
We have a second on that. Okay, we're not allowing any discussion, uh, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, so I just want to wish everyone a merry one and a happy one, uh, everybody be safe, and see everybody soon, thank you very much.
Enjoy the break, everyone.
Good night, all.
Bye.